You do then? We'll go ahead and call with meetings ordered, roll call.
Mark?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
MC?
Here.
Do you join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which there stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more prayer before we probably will be thanking for who we are. We thank you for your presence this meeting. We pray that you bless those here. Guide us in all the businesses that we conduct this evening. Forgive us, we're prepared to be crushed.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approving the attendance. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Okay, approve.
Got a motion from, uh, Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second from Jeremy. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That passed. Next item is the, um, minutes for the last two meetings. And due to the circumstance, or with all that was going on over the past couple of weeks, we don't have those yet. So I'd entertain a motion to table.
Did July minutes have it changed?
They, I didn't bring them. I didn't know if there was changes there or not. And since I didn't get anything, I didn't bring anything.
Yeah, there were no changes because the council said that what happens, happened. So the amount and the minutes were correct. And they got a copy of those at the previous meeting.
Uh, if you feel comfortable making a motion to something that's not in this packet, that's fine. Do you want, do I hear a motion to approve July's? I mean, it was provided last night.
Yeah, well, I'll move to approve so I have a second.
Okay, got a motion from Mark, a second from Jeremy. Uh, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, so that is approved. And the August ones, certain ones, do I hear a motion to table?
Some.
Got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All in favor say aye.
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 Alright, and that, those are tabled. The next item is financial reports. And the city financials fall into that same category. Do I hear a motion to table those?
Some.
Got a motion by, uh, Mike, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Then can we discuss this, and can we discuss it for a second?
Sure.
So, what is the circumstances with this? Not only do I-
Kim was extremely busy and did an excellent job on the pancake breakfast with the fire department.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And she was out in a training seminar as well for a week, so-
You should have June and July's financials. Because those were given to you at the, at the last council meeting. So you should have those. I didn't have the August prepared yet, not for that same week of the minutes.
And the August ones are the only ones really changing, so-
Thanks.
If you want to do the June and July, we can approve those. Or if you want to go ahead and bring them all back, we can do that.
Alright, we've got them, uh, right?
Yeah, y'all got those last time. So do you want to pass June and Julys?
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay, got a motion from MC to pass June and July, do I hear a second?
Well, second.
Second by Mark. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And let's go ahead then and make, hear a motion to table the August ones.
Some.
Got a motion by Mike, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is tabled. The next ones are the July and August water and sewer financials. And those you have in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Got a motion by, uh, MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Those were approved. Mark reports, August, uh, fire department.
I'm only doing stuff is, we're trying to finalize the ladder truck. Probably should have something between guys in the next month to deal with that. Getting the jet, the tow tractor, guys, on this time, and you guys approve of that? Uh, the pancake breakfast was really well. Um, Kim and Lisa, appreciate them very much. It was a great timeout. I mean, it was barely from about seven thirty till ten o'clock. It was a great success, so. Other than that, I think they're good.
Chief, I got a question. Um, I've heard in the news about new federal regulations. Um, talking about, uh, mandating, you know, replacement of fire trucks and equipment that's more than fifteen years old, I think?
Correct. I read some of that, I think like engines are like sixteen, ladders are like twenty.
Yeah, okay. Does that impact us? I know we're buying the new-
Yeah, we're buying them either.
So that's-
If it does, if it does get made-
We got other old equipment, other trucks.
If it does get passed, all our engines, like, like, this year are about twenty years old.
That's true with a lot of small towns across the country.
Yeah, and we've had, I've had a discussion with other people about it. Like, I don't know how, other departments, like, other smaller cities are going to afford that.
Right, how far out is that? I mean, they're going to make a rule or something, and it's got to go through, you know, it's going to take some time to go through and process. But do you have any particulars on like when that would, like, really be an effect?
Well, what they usually do, like, NFPA will enact a rule, and you have so many years to-
Yeah, it's not going to be like tomorrow, you got to get all the trucks.
And so, and there's still backflow for trucks-
Phase in, phase out, and-
Yeah, I mean, a fire engine right now is taking three, four years to get built.
Yeah, yeah.
Like our ladder truck, it's already, we're not going to get it until twenty twenty-six now. It was November twenty twenty-five. I remember Bayer, E one, the fire truck, that last Tuesday. And he said, we're almost at the end of the next year, to begin twenty-six. So I already talked to the man, I said, we're not, we're not getting it until twenty, into twenty twenty-five, and we might just move to the beginning of twenty twenty-six for five years.
So you don't know how much, I mean, you figure we've got a few years running, but you don't really have a clear idea yet. Because at some point, with, given the lead times, we're talking about, if that thing goes through, we need to think about maybe replacing-
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to replace it. We, first race has one engine, and then after county, you have one from the county.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm hoping, or I'm trying to push the county to replace our engine next year. And so, because it's a two thousand, four model, I believe.
So we got that one, that's going to be replaced.
So, if case rates just comes one engine.
Okay.
So-
Potential, where you have to buy another one?
Buy another one.
We don't know the timeline yet.
No, I don't. About that's happened, that's worrying.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's still-
And engines are up there almost one million off, a million right now. They're going to just purchase one, expect to work nine hundred and eighty-five thousand.
So I could see us taking delivery and whatever, and then turn around and order another one, but-
Correct.
I mean, we got the big one, the ladder, or another engine. There's won't be as much, but it's going to be a lot.
Yeah, we got to have a ladder. And reasonable ladder, it helps your ISO points.
Yeah.
So here's another gear, accompany them for ISO. You got a motion to help with the roof song, right?
That was a done deal, we got that one. Alright, I, I just wanted to ask about-
If I had to find it up, you'd go to-
That, that specific, I think it's like a rule, a federal rule. I don't think it has to get passed by Congress, but still has to go through some scrutiny. Can we challenge in the courts?
Right.
So, um, we'll see what happens, but I think it's something we can kind of lay down there.
And I've been watching, I've checked up a little bit.
I figured you had, but we hadn't talked about it as a group yet, so-
How much do you progress, say Mark, with, you posted about volunteer fire, rural fire priority associations around the state? I mean, they don't do it, so I think those have been a whole act of fact. They didn't offer a lot of detail on this, so, pretty much had the same question. Do our engines have the same lead times? Do things ladders are a little bit less?
A little bit more.
More, okay.
Yeah, so they got the twenty years on the ladders. Yeah, so, an engine fifteen years, you know, to replace from their old, is what they're saying now. Like our engines are twenty years old.
Okay.
So-
And they're running good.
Yeah, I mean, they're running good, I checked, I got-
You've got it over ten years, probably.
Yeah, I mean, they got rules on everything, like, on your tires, you know, NFPA on your tires, how many years you have to replace those, years and years, every ten years. There's, there's so many rules I could add, that were factored into the last, I don't know, six years. The administration will pick it's over next year, whichever one can determine the new schedule. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Police report?
Just, uh, so as you know, the, the process of the, uh, new hires, you know, we have three spots. We have hired one, and he started today, um, training, or he started yesterday, I guess. And, uh, I forgot what day it was. Uh, yeah, he started yesterday, and, uh, working out real well so far. Um, we're, we're taking our time on the next two. We, we've only got three applicants as of yet, but we haven't posted it for maybe two weeks. So, um, we're, we're wanting to get a, a few more applicants in before we start interviewing the rest of them. Uh, this one, that we did end up hiring, came very highly recommended from a couple of agencies up here, and people I know that worked at those agencies. Highly recommended. So, uh, we wanted to jump on him pretty quickly, uh, before we lost him to a, another agency, because he wasn't going to be free for long. Uh, so, we're hoping to, probably two to three weeks, maybe four weeks, to where we get him out on the street. Um, uh, because we, of course, got by the uniforms and all that stuff. Uh, that takes a little bit of time. The thing that takes the most time is the best. Because those are fit, fitted for them. Uh, so, that's, that's our biggest holdup with him. Uh, once that comes in. Um, the status of the cars. The two new cars, um, that you guys approved with the three people, um, they're sitting over in Silone, um, just waiting for their turn to be moved over, uh, to, in rotation to get outfitted. The people that do the outfitting for us, um, do Benton County, uh, Silone Springs, uh, they do several different agencies. And they, and they do them in order that they get paid for and, and going. So, um, it might be a, a little while before we get to see those. But, uh, they are sitting over there, and they are ours. So, uh, I'm not too worried about that. So, uh, other than that, um, just so you guys know, we had to work another accident down here yesterday at the intersection, where we're waiting on this light. And it's the same thing over and over. They pull out, and it's clear, get, get hit. So, uh, you can't get that light quick enough. Uh, but other than that, uh, do you guys have any questions?
We have one shot fired.
Mm-hmm, I, I, I didn't look into that, um-
Did it, you're a particular one, you know?
It's very possible it was an arm dealer. Uh, I don't know.
I don't, heard of that before. Rick, that accident you said, I mean, I was driving in the town to go to City Hall, this, sort of work.
Yes.
Sitting around them, was it?
Yes.
And I saw, there were some vehicles pulled up in the driveway of that Thompson and Halls lot, um, right there.
Uh, I don't know if that was involved, I, I never went down there.
They just pull up and go over there?
If, if the cars are movable, we, we get them off the road quickly.
Get them off the road, yeah. Don't let, because it would have been a big backup, I don't understand.
Yeah, it's, uh, if there, if there's ever an accident-
It was the aftermath of that, they might have pulled in the driveway.
It's very possible where they moved, they tried to get them off the road pretty quick.
Doesn't even have to be a separate incident.
It was an accident.
It was separate.
Oh, it was, the cop was working.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it's been three or four.
The first accident, it caused, um, probably another one, I'm assuming, yes.
Well, there's, the last two weeks, I bet we've had four or five there.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's heat and steady.
I don't want to just take real life, what's going on. I think you can tell them that-
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't appear to be sinking in.
But, it's, it's, traffic ain't slowing, I mean, it's not decreasing. The volume, uh, we, we know that.
Yeah.
So, it's just, we, we can't get it quick enough. But, uh, I know it's coming, and hopefully there's an update tonight. There is, I like that. So, uh, any other questions about anything? No, thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Next one's, planning commission report?
Very good. Aside from the, you know, items we talked about that y'all have on your exhibit, my, my commission that last week. We've got some new items, you know, coming before the commission. Um, some of them we've seen before, but first one's lock combo for the church Christ, I'm sure we're in partnership. Um, we've been trying to work this out for a few months now, actually. Finally got everything worked together. It's a minor, um, lock combination, really. They're actually getting rid of the parcel, cleaning up some lines. It's actually, really making both owners' properties more uniform, better, better. No major issue with that. We've got a minor subdivision, um, on, uh, corner of Rainbow and Shore. There's a ten acre property in the back, sounds, probably a good, two, a couple of splits off of it. Um, kind of a year net. Big thing is we've got another, uh, PZD, resuming. Uh, this is for the property, um, that was annexed into the city on Murdock Road, uh, two months ago, two months ago, something like that. So they've actually submitted the PZD documents when we started doing that. And we expect this to take a little bit of time to go over, like, most of these PZDs.
So the pillage count, right?
Yes, yeah. And then, uh, we received back a site development plan that's part of the Barnes mixed-use site, um, just north of, you know, where, we've been talking about this traffic light and everything. Part of what they had resumbed it with PZD, and they had already kind of provided some of these, uh, plans. And they've gone through a lot of their, um, personal engineering, so we've got that being reviewed with our engineers. And everything really actually looks in line with what they had submitted with PZD. I don't perceive any major issues, I think just reviewing the history. Everything's fitting within, uh, the floodplain, and on that area, things like that. And then, last thing is, you know, we're really working to get subdivision code finalized, get final draft, and that would basically get the full code. MC is reviewing it, um, with Justin's had time to look at the final draft a bit much, but, basically just getting all parties, making sure everybody feels good about it, and then working that up into an official ordinance to give it adopted, so. So those are the new items. I'd say, you know, at least two of those you will, or, yeah, two of those you'll see, you know, the two resumes. Y'all got any questions about any of that? If you have a question, we'll get you up there and do that. Yes, sir.
Next item is the water and sewer committee report.
So, we had a meeting last night, I think, that one of us, as you can see, is trending, depending on how it is this month, that I think overall is trending really downward, because we went, if we look at eight to seventy-one percent, now we're down all the way to forty-five percent. Last month was forty-one percent, so even the labor, that, that fluctuation is normal, I think I expect from what I talk to the engineer. Yeah. But I, I think, overall, yeah, highly outside of them to look at the leaks, the, what are the leaks that we had. And say it was a good idea, it's paying off quickly. And, uh, it has helped us to identify the leaks and start working on them. And I think having new staff, uh, public work, it had helped getting those leaks fixed faster. Now, one of the, one of them is Hampton State, that is about one million eight hundred thousand, that we know that. And they're trying to replace all the lines. I think they have worked on, they worked on it today, right?
That was my understanding, yes.
Uh, as far as staffing goes, we show two people right now. And I think as of last night, it was, it was. I, I think really overall, they're coming with new software, they're working on a new software coming, like, online, that would help us identify if there is open ticket, why is ticket is open, how long it's been taken, being able to us on intelligent report, rather than working on, you know, slowly trying to manage if any things out. So, that intelligent report is going to help us, and also being able to, as soon as some project is done, getting in touch, giving it, so there's something for them to let us know, are they happy with it? So we've been moving really forward with that. I'm speaking, you know, in a committee, but Mark is on a committee also, you can speak to that also. The reminder, also other big search protection. I think it's a good thing that we're doing that, the, the preventing from future issue coming on, that it being proactive, rather than waiting until the disaster happens and then not being prepared for it. So, I'm really happy about that. I think everybody really was, uh, positive about that. Maybe it's going to go for a bit for some. As far as the engineering report goes, uh, handed to you, go ahead, go over it.
Uh, yeah, I just want to note that on that water loss report, that we're showing a little over eighteen million gallons lost last month. If you total up that lease detected box, it comes out to twelve million five hundred thousand, and that's a good chunk of that. And if we get, you know, if we get the ones detected taken care of, that's what, that's what our water loss count is, the local one, which is really close.
So, do you think there will change?
Uh, I mean, there for a while, we were knocking out those lead cards pretty fast. I know we've been spending additional time addressing those services this last month, that's why we didn't, we don't see as many of those lead cards addressed this last month. But, uh, I guess a couple of months, we should have these taken care of. I don't know how, how many we're getting a month there, but it is quite a few.
Yeah, we were, we went through the, most of the fifty-five in the first two months. The ones that we have listed now are the ones that will require boring and replacement of the service lines. And so those take a little longer, and they're dependent on an outside contractor's assistance. So, sometimes that takes a little bit longer.
So we could make two street notes, maybe, maybe?
The two may work.
Yeah.
They're working at it. They had him in town last week, and I think he's there being today.
I know we talked about that a little bit last night, and was, want to check that out, one, two, three.
Is there anyone ready to move on to the engineering report?
Yes.
Uh, I've got a whole bunch, uh, on the water sewer notes, on, on the NACIS sewer project. Uh, we got work with the contractor that the bore under Osage Creek has done a lot faster than they thought. And so now they moved up their, this is a start date of that pump station, and it was January, I have a thing that we have by the end of this year. And then, on the traffic side, we had housekeeping comments from RDOT. And we got word, uh, today, actually, that, uh, computers and associates has submitted, I'm sending drawings back to RDOT, addressing all comments that requested speed. That's all made, so I got.
Okay, next, okay. Okay.
What was some contract, subcontractor, central, central, sort of, come on there?
Yes, that was a, so we had inspection triggered on our system and after that inspection, DQ had some comments and we had submitted a comment response back, uh, September twelfth and on September sixteenth, DQ responded and writing that responses, our responses were accurate.
Yeah, but what, what, what was the problem?
Uh, it's my understanding that a former employee of the contractor that was, worked, that has operated the system, had let somebody go and that person is the person that basically requested an inspection of the system.
Thank you.
Next one's the Attorney's report.
I've been working on the franchise, uh, creatures, I thought about last time. Uh, and right now I have a, prepare a gas franchise ordinance and a, uh, a local power, which is Swatco and Carroll Wilford. Uh, the, as I mentioned last time, uh, we've got some, uh, uh, those, those in particular, uh, the last times of the month, they did this in the early, late nineteen eighties. Uh, and, uh, so I have a, a more current draft of, of both, both of those. Both the telephone and cable franchises were done later, uh, but they don't quite match up to, uh, some of the terms that we want. So, uh, I'm okay with tackling those next and we don't have anything for, uh, for data, for fiber. Uh, so that is, uh, the, the plan that I have is to try to, try to keep all these terms relatively standard, uh, especially when you're digging in the road, using the driveways, uh, uh, so we don't have different terms for every, for each utility. Uh, but my plan is to bring that forward to all the work session coming up, uh, and so you can see all of them. And, uh, also need to look at the fees, franchise fees, uh, all these are charged at four and a half percent, uh, or below that and, uh, you have to make a difference. So, nothing, we, we usually consider that in your budget discussions, uh, coming up if, if there was an increase. Where would that go? Those are fees, I believe, are applied to streets, are dedicated to streets, so that's something that you all can, uh, look at. Mark's question earlier, I, I may be, I may have looked at this too, uh, I believe what you may be referring to is motion rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm reviewing that, uh, is it rulemaking right now? Uh, I, I heard about it from another department, actually, and, uh, I wouldn't look, it is in rulemaking right now, which means that, uh, there is, it, it, it certainly is complete and there is quite a bit of time there, uh, to, uh, they have, they have to, they polish the rules and then post rules and they have, on a comment, on a hearings and it goes through this whole process and then, as you mentioned, it can be challenged. Um, but, uh, I have been going through that, uh, just to, uh, keep myself abreast of it. Uh, if, uh, when I get through that, I'm not clear done, when I do, if I have, if I seize the information, they would be, or I'll, I'll bring that forward.
Anything else? The next one is the Clerk Treasurer's report. And before you start, I want to say something real quick. I want to recognize Kim for an accomplishment. She was recently recognized in the session she went to as, uh, CMC, which is Certified Municipal Clerk through the International Institute for Municipal Clerks. That's not a minor thing, she has earned that for a number of years and congratulations.
The Clerk's, uh, office has been extremely busy with the pancake breakfast and thank goodness it's over. Um, we're, now we're focusing on Christmas and cave and getting all of our Christmas vendors set up and getting all that ready to go. So, if you know of anybody that wants to be on the committee, we would love to have them, but everything else seems to be going first, first move.
Thank you. And tonight, in the interest of, uh, moving things along, I didn't prepare a report, I'll be addressing a few follow-ups here in just a little bit. So, we're, next, we're going to do, uh, public comments, if you would. Um, this is the opportunity, if there's something on the agenda, agenda you want to speak out about or discuss, this is your opportunity to step up and, and discuss with the council what you'd like to, to discuss. So, is there anyone that wants to speak in the public comments?
I hear equipment.
Yeah. Okay, the next, I'll go to the follow-up. The SOPs, I've been busy lately and we've had some people absent and since the work session, I haven't had a chance to follow up on that. Um, but I know that progress was being made prior to that and I will be following up on it by the end of this week. Uh, traffic light, you just got the report. We did get the, uh, engineers to release the information from the state and, uh, our engineers have now got it submitted for, for the, uh, actual permit. Community building, if you've not noticed, it's coming along. There's a, they're working on the parking lot today. They've done a lot of interior work and painting. There's works that are ordered and should be here in the next week or two. Uh, they're expecting to be done before the end of October, so it is progressing. Uh, the Wager Road signs are in and we have, uh, will be getting those up soon. And the Ridgewood repairs, I spoke with the guy that's the contractor that's doing that work out by the, uh, highway. He will be doing some prep work tomorrow that's off-site prep for like signs and, and barrier, or, uh, barrels and, and stuff for their safety and they're planning to start work on Thursday. So, that's my update. Next item is the, uh, resolution that we're, this is old business, it's the resolution that we, um, approved, I think it's two months ago, but there's a question about the number of votes, so that's the reason we're using the old number. Justin mentioned that we could go ahead and use the same number since it's not been used and keep it uniform. Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight?
Uh-huh.
We've got a motion from MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? This is to Patty Cash.
Okay.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and this time it's passed. Next item on the agenda is the resolution to amend the budget. And this is just the, um, to approve the transfer for the community building, that the expenditure was already approved in the budget. So, do I hear a motion to approve?
So, we can discuss.
Okay, yeah, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion by MC and a second by Mike and it's open for discussion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, that is approved. And what's your number on it?
Twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Next item is a resolution authorizing the property tax to be, uh, for twenty twenty-four to be collected in twenty twenty-five with the recommendation that it stay the same at two point six four mils. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Oh, to approve that.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and that's approved. That will be forty. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, ordinance to approve the new zoning map. Do I hear, or I need, uh, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading, that title only?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy and, um, roll call.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved.
City Case Spring, David County Arkansas, ordinance, stopping a new zoning map for City Case Spring, declaring emergency.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Oh, to approve.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? Roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Okay, and is there an emergency clause on that?
Yes, there is.
Okay, yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause? Got a motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mark, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, like sign. What's the ordinance number?
Don't we have to do a roll call at our...
I'm sorry, you do.
Okay.
Roll call?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Now, what's our number on that?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? Next item is rezon of seventy-eight acres on Carrar Road. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading?
So.
Got a motion by, uh, MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, roll call.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Uh, pass.
City Case Spring, David County Arkansas, ordinance to rezon approximately seventy-eight point two nine, uh, five acres of real property located generally at intersections of Carrar Road and Farland with the city, but it's a Case Spring, Arkansas, from agriculture A1 to general district.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So, to approve.
Second. Second. Did, the floor is open to discussion?
Who made that motion, did you second?
Mark made the motion, MC second.
Yeah, thank you.
How about the applicants here today, if there are questions? If not, uh, roll call.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved.
It was.
Twenty?
You don't get to leave yet, though. Stay the rest.
First edition of this kidding.
I was in the real plan commission last night until midnight, so, if I could get skewed.
The, uh, next item on the agenda is the ordinance to rezon approximately nine point five nine acres on, uh, North Main Street. Do I hear a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading?
Oh, so...
Got a motion from Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from MC, um, roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
That was approved.
City Case Spring, David County Arkansas, ordinance to rezon approximately nine point five nine acres of real property located at twenty-three forty-nine North Main Street from general agricultural A1 to general and highway commercial C2 in City Case Spring, Arkansas.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Mark, Mark made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Jeremy, any discussion?
Where is this located?
It's just north of, uh, Haxton and Pleasant Grove.
Okay, it's in the northwest corner.
Northwest corner.
Just wanted to be sure.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Next item is an ordinance to rezon approximately three point seven seven acres located at the southwest corner of, uh, Main Street to Pleasant Grove. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final?
So.
Got a motion from MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy and roll call.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, that passed.
City Case Spring, David County Arkansas, ordinance to rezon approximately three point seventy-seven seven seven acres located at the southwest corner of North Main Street and West Pleasant Grove, Benton County parcel number, uh, zero-two dash zero-two-one-three-seven dash three-five-one, from general agricultural A1 to general and highway commercial C2 in City Case Spring, Arkansas.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion by Mike, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion? Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
That passed. Is there any discussion from the council? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by MC, second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, I thank you all and have a good evening.